What's the date? Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting, Norfolk Select Board Meeting, on September 14, 2022. Can we please start by standing to face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And so then we're going into...
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Excellent. So do you want to read the motion?
I will. I move that the board vote that after the board approves the closing of the public hearing, and did I skip one?
Hold on, yes. Actually, looking at Verizon here, there's some language for you to...
I have to start here. All right, I will start here. Apologize for the missed ups. Good evening. Welcome to the Norfolk Town of Norfolk's Public Hearing on the Town Verizon's Cable License Renewal. I am Anita Mecklenburg. Thank you for that. I'm Anita Mecklenburg, Chair of the Select Board, which is the Cable License Issuing Authority under Mass. General Law, Chapter 66A. This hearing is part of the cable license renewal process to ascertain the community's cable-related needs. Notice of this hearing was in the local newspaper two successive weeks. A notice is on the town website, the town's website. Copies of this legal advertisement are here, entered into the hearing record as ascertainment hearing Exhibits 1 and 2. By the way of background for the public, Norfolk's Verizon cable license expires on January 27, 2023. Federal and state law require the holding of public ascertainment proceedings, including this hearing. We will receive comments and testimony from the public and interested persons about what cable-related needs and interests are important to the public and about how the town's cable operations have performed under their existing licenses. Before proceeding to public comment, I would like to thank the members of Public NCTV, the nonprofit TV community studio, and Verizon for their participation in the assistance of ongoing license renewal proceedings. In this proceeding, we are open to accepting comments about all cable-related matters of interest to the public, including but not limited to customer service, license administration, the town's needs regarding the local studio, community programming, and public educational and governmental access, and maintaining support for the town's video origination capacities. Please keep your comments no longer than four minutes. Note that this process of ascertainment of cable needs and interests will remain open until further notice, so that even after tonight's hearing, the public will have further opportunity to submit written comments to the license renewal record for consideration by the town in its licensing process. We will proceed with going right to the public comment process, starting with those who have submitted written testimony, and then leaving time to hear from any other persons who want to speak. Thank you. Cool. So do we have written testimony?
I have not received...
We do not. Is there anybody who wants to speak on the Verizon licensing? Yes, Katie, come on up.
So I just have a short presentation about the ascertainment.
Thank you.
It might be the other one, actually.
That one's on, but no other.
So thank you so much for having me today. I'm Katie. I'm the Executive Director of Norfolk Community Television, which you guys know, but for everyone else. I just wanted to introduce NCTV a little bit and go over some of the needs that we have for this upcoming license period. So we have four staff members, myself and Andrew's in the back here, Chris is next door filming fire station building committee, and Jessmee, you might see her often filming meetings as well. And our Board of Directors, we have Pamela Russell, Jill Lawrence, Liz Davy, Beef Mizzola, Reynolds Lee, Herb Morris, and Al Baza. So this actually was covered in your opening, so I don't even need to go over this. But this is just kind of the background of the license. Wanted to talk a little bit about the capital funding. So in addition to the 5% general operating funds, the town also negotiates a set capital funds for capital needs. The Verizon contributed a sum of $150,000 during the last 15-year license, which was dispersed as three $50,000 payments in 2008, '09, and '15. The latest Comcast license renewal yielded a 10-year license with $76,000 in capital, dispersed at $7,600 annually. The new license for Comcast was effective as of May of this year. There's more information about this from when we did the general overview, so I put the link in the presentation in case anybody wanted to watch that video. This is just a chart of our programming data that's in the ascertainment as well up to 2020. So you can see that it is steadily rising. This is hours of programming per year, and in 2020, I suspect that it would be higher still. Even though we were at home for most of 2020, we didn't stop creating, and neither did the public. And this gives a breakdown of public education and government programming as well, so you can see the hours of programming per year. So part of what we did in the last couple of years is open the green room. We expanded and finished construction in 2020, so we took over another section of the building that we rent. And the space is intended for NCTV programs, community meetings and events, hybrid meeting space, performances, screenings, and additional filming space. Construction was quite a hefty sum, and this was just for the room itself. It doesn't include any video equipment. So that's something that we'd like to do in the next couple of years, is make it another space that we can really record in. It's open for use by nonprofit and for-profit groups alike, and we're hoping to expand that for the town. So we would be asking for $40,000 to outfit the room with video and audio recording equipment over the next 10 years. And just a couple of pictures of the space. The top left is set up for a hybrid meeting, which we were lucky to have the advisory board there last week, which was kind of exciting to be able to show it to a new group of people. Our main studio is equipped with three HD cameras, along with teleprompters, multiple set options, and microphone options. The space is in need of new flooring and a quieter air conditioning system. Right now, we have to turn it off to film, so you can imagine it gets pretty toasty in the summer. The equipment's also past its expected life, which is great that it's still working, but we're expecting to have to replace that in the next 10 years. And we're seeking $35,000 for flooring and for the AC replacement. And just a quick shot of our studio. If anyone's interested in filming a show, come on by. We also record many government meetings, like this meeting here today. So this is our regular roster of boards that we cover, and then we also have covered stuff that has been completed or as needed along the way. We've heard from different boards, their reliance on coverage for town boards, they've talked about re-watching to make sure that they have an accurate representation of what was happening, and for minutes, that's been really helpful. For community members, it's nice to be able to stay updated when they can't attend in person, and especially now that we have this whole hybrid setup, it changes the game completely because people can join from home. The hybrid meeting space, this space was put in in 2020, at the very, very tail end of 2020, and it really is a huge benefit. You know, we've heard from a ton of people that it opens it up to a lot of different people who couldn't attend in person for a variety of reasons, whether it be health, childcare, anything. Out of town, you know, presenters can join remotely and present their materials from another state and not have travel costs. There's lots of different reasons that it's been useful, and we're seeking $48,513 to help alleviate the costs associated with this upgrade, as well as ensure it stays updated and functional over the terms of the license agreement. We also would love to expand this a little bit more and have a sort of mobile hybrid space that we could use primarily in 120, but if that room were to change, we could move it to a different space. Right now, hybrid meetings in there are fine in person, but the recording suffers. There's not microphones for everybody. It's not as robust as something like this is, where you can get different camera angles and everything. And we'd be looking for $15,000 to equip something for 120, which would be fantastic. There's often meetings at the same time, like tonight, where that meeting, it's covered, but it's not covered as well as it could be because of this. For technology, our playback computer, which is what programs our three channels, will need replacement about twice in the 10 years. The current system that we have is lasting a little longer than previous systems that we've had, which is great, means it was a great investment for us, but just in case we want to plan for replacement twice over 10 years, which would be about $100,000. We also, right now, are using YouTube to archive and have on-demand playback, which has been great, but there are limitations. And Castus is the playback server that we use, and they also offer an on-demand service in which our channels can be watched live 24/7 on our website, which we currently have. And then the video on-demand part of it, we haven't quite taken advantage of yet, but we are hoping to do so and sort of move away from YouTube so that we can have better control over the videos that are up there and a bunch of different things. But we're seeking $51,000 for 10 years of annual payments for this subscription-based For studio equipment, to just maintain level service in our studio at 158 Main Street, the equipment would likely need to be replaced twice in 10 years, which is $282,000 roughly over the 10-year license, which is just level service. That's not any new features or anything like that. That's just to keep what we have right now but working. For field equipment, same thing, level service for cameras, microphones, tripods, cards, batteries, like kits and DSLRs, would be about $48,000 over 10 years. Additionally, we would love to upgrade some of the stuff that we do, which would include a drone. We could get some aerial footage of the town, which we have a few here and there from when someone who has their own drone has taken some, and it's really beautiful and gorgeous. And I think that would really highlight a lot of the things that we're doing in town in a different and unique way, and that would be about $7,000. That's not something we currently have, but that's something we would like to look for in this next license period. We also would like to invest in some wireless infrastructure. We've borrowed wireless communication systems, so like town meeting where we're all separated, we could talk to each other. Right now, we kind of just use hand signals to figure out who's covering what, which sort of works, but it would be a lot better if we could actually communicate with each other. And then there's also equipment that we could utilize to broadcast live from anywhere. So right now, we can do that over wireless internet, but it's not always strong enough. It's not always available. So this service would allow us to transmit from literally anywhere because it would be using cell data instead of Wi-Fi. So again, it's an upgrade from what we currently have, but I think it would be very useful for the things that we do in town, and we'd be seeking about $4,500 for these wireless So in summary, we are looking for about $35,000 for improvements to facilities, and for capital, we're looking for about $584,900, which would provide mostly level service with just a little bit of an upgrade. And so this really highlights the equipment that we need. And a lot of the times, we end up using our equipment past its expected life and just hope that it doesn't fail because we typically don't have the budget to purchase everything that we really need. So I just wanted to give an overview of what we're looking at. So we would be asking for $619,900, and Verizon provides cable service for about 50.91% of Norfolk's residents, which is the 2021 data. So that percentage of our total means we would be seeking about $315,591.09, according to our math, from Verizon for capital equipment. So we have a handful of people here in person and on Zoom today that want to speak to support NCTV. So this is our list here. I don't know if we just go in order and have them come up. Is that all right? So Kathleen?
Yes.
So you can either come up here, or there's a mic on the corner, whatever your...
Kathleen Sebring. I work as the Program Coordinator for the Norfolk Council on Aging, and I'm at the Norfolk Senior Center. It's a wonderful facility. We have been putting on some terrific programs, and having NCTV available to record them has been absolutely wonderful. We have many homebound seniors that really need to be able to access some of the programs that we present, as well as you have some wonderful archive footage of the history of Norfolk, parades going back to 1970. When you are a senior and you get to see yourself on television from some of these old films, I mean, it's wonderful. But the best part is to be able to bring some of this programming into people's homes. Since the pandemic, of course, a lot of people were afraid to come into the senior center, but now we find that we have many, many more people, and our rooms are filling up. And to be able to have you record this is really, really important. So I look forward to that, and I highly suggest that the funding is very well supported for this wonderful programming from Norfolk Cable Television.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have Donna Jones. Donna's been involved in some capacity since the 90s, definitely has the institutional knowledge of NCTV.
Donna Jones of North Street. I discovered NCTV in 1995 and have not left yet. I was thrilled to learn how to use the expensive equipment and the computer software. It's an excellent way to work with all civic and community groups, and I don't want to see the equipment or programming degrade or be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna. And we have La Magna on Zoom from the Cactus and Succulent Society of Massachusetts.
Hi. My name is Lawrence Magna from the Cactus and Succulent Society, which sounds like kind of an odd little group to have around here, but actually, we have quite a reach and quite an impact, not only locally in New England, but also around the world. And a lot of it is due to NCTV. You probably know we have a big festival, annual festival, coming up this Saturday at the Town Hill and in the library. It's quite an event, and we have 22 vendors coming in to set up their tents on Town Hill on Saturday. They come from New York City. They come from the Hudson River Valley. They come from Williamsburg. They come from New Hampshire. They come from Rhode Island, and they come from Connecticut, plus from around locally in Massachusetts. And NCTV has an awful lot to do with the reach that brought those folks to us. And not only do they help with the promotion of this festival, but they actually film the festival and then put together a video, which goes onto YouTube, and that goes out all over the place. One of our most recent members just joined because he saw a video of last year's festival. That member is from Indonesia. So who knows, Little Norfolk, who's in Indonesia promoting cacti and succulents. And it's more about the town, though, than just the plants, and it's the camaraderie that comes with it all. So we definitely love NCTV and treasure what they can do for us and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, La. And we have Father Stephen Zukas and Father Gregory Vazo from St. Jude Parish.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. It's weird to categorize the pandemic as somewhat of a blessing, but that's what NCTV has been to our parish, and that is due to the pandemic. The big challenge of reaching out to the community and trying to serve the community was very, very enthusiastically embraced by NCTV. And Katie, I will confess that I wasn't sure about the commitment of NCTV at first, but when our own parishioner, Mr. David Dillon, would call Katie up every Sunday morning at 7:30 in the morning to make sure the manual link was between the church and the TV studio, I was just amazed that was going on on a consistent basis. And I think he only had to wake you up once.
I think so. I think that was once.
So grateful for that.
So that was the beginning of the relationship, and then Katie was kind enough to come to the church and instruct us and advise us on how to get a permanent system in place so we didn't have to count on Dave every single Sunday morning. And at the same time, you made an upgrade yourself so you didn't have to be there in the morning. And so we've continued that relationship, but what I'm happy to know is that Father Gregory and myself were also assigned to St. Edward the Confessor in Medfield, and it is important that we try to treat the parishes as equally as possible. And I just want to commend Katie for reaching out to Medfield TV and how they share the signal broadcast from St. Jude's, so both television stations can broadcast, have that ability. And Katie not only broadcasts Norfolk at 8 o'clock, but Medfield at 9 o'clock, and we're, again, we're very grateful to reinforce the notion of a collaborative nature to our parishioners of both parishes through your personal example of doing that.
Thank you.
I'll let Father Gregory.
I would say the relationship that we have with Norfolk Community TV is truly a partnership in so many ways, beginning with the technology, of course. It starts out with a need that has to be met, and as we begin to implement the technology to meet the need, that takes time, and we had a lot of coaching, a lot of help with that. But then we were able to envision where we might go from there, how we might grow this, and we've been able to expand our offerings to our own communities, both in Medfield and in Norfolk. And Katie, you and your team have been with us every step of the way to assist us with that, to offer us possibilities, and to really take the lead in establishing further partnerships so that we were able to build at least the start of a video and audio system where we could stream to our communities, and to work with both Medfield TV and NCTV, and to see where we might go from here. We look forward to some further possibilities, maybe growing as NCTV grows. As we grow, we grow together, and it's very exciting. And we know many people are being helped by this, people who can't come to church regularly because they're perhaps elderly, homebound, sick, other reasons, but it keeps them connected to our community. We're able to really connect them with the life of the community. And this pandemic has impacted so many religious organizations so very hard. We feel like we've had a real edge, a real benefit, and it just keeps... It remains such a big part now of how we're seen, and our whole relationship with the community is touched by that. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Amen. We've been blessed by NCTV. Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All of us has his hand up, but I don't know if it's in relation to...
We do see hands, and we're going to go through our list on the TV, and then we'll go to the hands in the audience.
So we have Paul Zinni, the Superintendent of the King Philip Regional School District, on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I certainly echo all of the very important things that I heard other people speak about this evening and couldn't agree with everything that was said more. What resonated with me was when we also heard about community just now, and I think it's important for all of us to understand that in King Philip, we're governed or really driven by our strategic plan. The work that we do is around making sure that our students receive the highest quality education possible in the safest environment possible. And we have outlined what that work looks like through a five-goal strategic plan. And goal... And Goal Three actually says to grow and sustain a mutually supportive and trusting relationship with stakeholder groups for the benefit of the mission and vision of the King Philip Regional School District and to sustain a positive connection with and among the community at large. When I think about that goal, I, the first thing that comes into my mind is NCTV. Norfolk Cable has been such a tremendous friend to King Philip in my entire tenure here for the tri-town community. We've looked for a variety of ways to make sure that we are communicating with our stakeholders, students, parents, the community at large, to make sure that everyone is proud and connected to the schools. Cable has certainly been a huge factor in that. And just to kind of mention to you a couple of ways, certainly we've heard about all of the support we received during the pandemic. I don't know where we would have been without the communications strategies that were employed during the pandemic. So many of our families were concerned about their children's safety, coming to school and what that education would look like. And we were able to get that message out in a variety of ways, cable being one of those very strong ways that we got that message out. And we were very fortunate for that. Additionally, the cable station allows us the opportunity to get information into the hands of the people throughout the community, people that may not get our newsletters or may not get our parent letters, but people who are also interested in what's going on in the schools. And so it allows us to disseminate information, whether it's from people watching our school committee meetings or in fact, I'm watching my cable show. Thanks to Katie and her vision for how to get the communication out to the community, we created a cable show entitled King Philip Regional Review where I am able to bring on guests who work within the school system and talk about very important issues that affect the schools and affect our community. And I think that's been an important way of getting the message out. Additionally, we have lots of wonderful things going on in the schools that people don't always get to access. And so we've now been seeing cable coming into the schools and broadcasting, taping and broadcasting our concerts. Our music groups are national award winners and unfortunately, not all of the community gets to hear the beautiful music. And so by recording things like the music that our musicians play and the plays that we are able to perform for our community, more people get to access those wonderful quality shows. So again, I can't stress enough the importance of what cable has meant to the school system as we try to communicate effectively with the community. We know that transparency is crucial and we're doing our best to do that. And cable has been a major factor. One other area that I will point out before I sign off and let others speak as well would also be the fact that when we have to review our budget annually, and people are very concerned about that, having those budget presentations, again, taped by cable and then shared across the three communities has been a very important resource for our towns. So I thank you for indulging me and giving me this opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I give you my full support for NCTV. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Paul. And I just want to give a shout out. Donna Jones is the one who's been taping all of those King Philip music concerts. I can't even count how many you've filmed. And she's our Volunteer of the Year for 2021. So just a little shout out to Donna there.
Yay.
We had Emery, but I don't see her here, so she might have not made it. So we have Linda Balfour, the Principal of the HLD Day School.
Good evening, everyone. Aye. Aye, Anita. My old partner at HOD. It's a pleasure to be here in support of NCTV. I did write a few comments because I figured if I spoke off the cuff, I'd be speaking a lot longer than four minutes. So Katie and the NCTV staff have been wonderful partners of the HLD Day School for many, many years. They come to HOD many times during the school year to record our special events such as our Halloween Parade, our Holiday Sing-Along, Read Across America activities, Earth Day Assembly, and our second grade clapout, just to name a few. They're always there to do the same for our grade level performances at the end of the year, such as the kindergarten memory show, first and second grade concerts, and other performances and our field days. So the support that NCTV provides is invaluable because it provides families and community members the opportunity to see these special events and participate in the life of our school, even if they're not able to attend those events. Many parents have commented throughout the years about how much they enjoy watching the HOD events, which they can view at any time at their convenience, in their PJs with popcorn and in the middle of the night. I have, we've had people say sometimes, I saw you on TV at 2:00, you know, in the morning because they're able to tune into those shows at any time, which is great. NCTV helps us to communicate and interact with parents and the community in an effective and fun way. Our students love to see themselves on the screen as they watch with their families and to share their special events and moments with grandparents and other family members who do not live in the area. No matter where they live, they're able to enjoy watching the videos thanks to the good work of the NCTV staff, especially Katie, Andrew, and Chris, who have been to HOD many, many times over the past several years. In fact, they are really considered members of our extended HOD school family. They are very accommodating, often come for an event on very short notice. During the height of the pandemic, when access to our school was limited, they played an especially important role as they were our visual link to the community. They recorded tours of the school and introductions of teachers when families were not able to come to school due to the COVID guidelines. And then we had many, many families, because we have pre-K and K especially, we had many families that were brand new to our school. So in summary, at HOD, we view NCTV as important and invaluable school partners and members of our school family. So anything we can do to support them, we will. They support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
And we had Jen Coate, but she had a class, so I don't think that she's going to make it to us. And we had a late written submission from Library Director Sarah Ward. And that will wrap up my taking up all your time.
Are there any hands up?
Yes.
Paul Burns.
Paul Burns?
Hi, everybody. Paul Burns here. I think we've heard a lot of good things and I'm going to echo those comments that have been said so far. I love having this resource in our town. It's certainly connected me to the community in a greater way. I do have a little concern, and pardon me for digging into the minutia here, but it's over that drone that you all want to acquire. I think I saw that the anticipated cost is $7,000. And that's a pretty high-end drone. I mean, I was just scrolling through Amazon here. I think DJI drones are topping out at $2,000. So I think $7,000 for the drone and whatever accessories might be, you know, needed, you know. As much as I love Norfolk television, this is not Channel 5 news, you know what I mean? So like, I think we have to kind of keep it a little reasonable with that one here. And I think concern number two I want to voice is, you know, I don't know who's planning and operating this thing, if they've got drone experience or if this is going to be used amidst a crowd of any kind. You know, what happens when, hopefully this never happens, but it now functions for one reason or another, falls from the sky and lands on some kid's head, you know? So two concerns I thought we should all be a little bit aware of, but other than that, you know, I want to echo the support here.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Karen Riley would also like to speak. Karen?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Katie. So I am the Administrator for the Norfolk Community Page, and I have worked with Katie and several members of NCTV over the last two years to help conduct many small business spotlights that you may have seen. I first worked with Katie on the Neighbors Helping Neighbors fundraiser, which was coordinated with the Norfolk Lions, as well as over the last two years for Norfolk Discovery Day. We all know how much small businesses mean to our community, and these spotlights have meant so much to our small businesses here in Norfolk. If you are a member of the Community Page, Katie is also the one behind all the cool graphics that were used for the promotions for Neighbors Helping Neighbors as well as Discovery Day promotions. Katie not only provided the graphics, but she helped coordinate many of the five-minute spotlight videos with each of the businesses. And NCTV also provided all of the editing of the videos. And then the videos were also produced in such a way that many of our small businesses can use them down the road for their own marketing. So I am casting my support for funding them. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jen, do you want to?
Sure.
I'm going to bring you up to a microphone.
Sorry. You can either sit there or hold this. Okay. You can consider holding.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cody and I own Exhale School of Dance. We've been in town for six years now. NCTV is crucial to the town. For us, during COVID, they came right out, they helped us do a spotlight when it all kind of shut down. On top of that, we couldn't do anything normal. So we had to have outdoor shows and on top of that, we had to have limited attendees. And what they allowed us to do is they streamed it live, so they had to figure out a whole new way to do it, a whole new channel because of music and copyrights and other things. And they were right there by our side. I have to say, I know a lot of people in the dance community and they tell me that their cable television was not able to show up for the town in the way that Norfolk Community Television has. Like I said, they are so important, not only to small businesses, but the entire town. And I think it's crucial that we keep them here.
Thanks, Jen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands up? Amanda? No. I see right now.
So thank you so much for your very thorough presentation, Katie. Did you want to ask any questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things I wanted to just go over very quickly. First and foremost, after, what, five years of stumbling through interviews in that studio, I just heard for the first time, there's a teleprompter there? Duly noted. Katie, I was wondering if you might be able to just take us through some of the programming trends that you've seen. I mean, I saw the spike in the amount of data that's being pushed through, but have you seen things that are more popular than others or things that are being requested more by the community?
Yeah, so ironically, government meetings are probably the most viewed. People want to stay informed and I think that that's really great. And other than that, the school stuff is really viewed highly and the kids just love seeing themselves. I think that's part of it. And the parents always really want to be involved, especially when your kids are little. It's so fun. But really, it's, I don't know that there's a specific thing. I think that, you know, we had like the parade, that was a big one, the 150th Parade. I think people are just excited to know what's going on in town and programs, people can't always get to a program in person as much as we would love them to. We've had that same issue with classes. We offer classes a bunch and people say they want to do it, but then it's always a challenge to actually get them there. So being able to record stuff makes a big difference. And I think that it helps other people in the community value other programs even more, whether it's the library, the seniors' center, or anything. But I think it's really a variety. I don't think there's one specific area that stands out over others.
Fantastic, thank you. And I did just want to echo one thing that you had mentioned, just to really emphasize it. This incredible setup that you have is available to the community. Anybody that wants to come in, that wants to record a show or go through a specific item that they want put out there, is able to use the facilities and the equipment to do that. So I don't know if that's as widely known as it probably should be, but I did want to just make sure to emphasize that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's everything I have.
And then just to comment on the comments that have gone through, the theme that you hear from person to person to person is how your organization has helped us to stay connected to each other. And so thank you for doing that work for us and it was a pleasure to listen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie. There's no more hands, right?
No.
We're good? Do you want to move?
Now the motion.
Now it comes.
Right, there we go. I move that the board vote that after the board approves the closing of the public hearing and the hearing record on September 14th, 2022, members of the public may continue to submit comments on Town Cable license renewal needs for later review by the Select Board in a process for license renewal ascertainment of needs. And the board reserves the right to schedule and hold additional hearings and/or public meetings for review and consideration of such public comments. Residents may submit written testimony via email to the email address listed here or via mail to the Select Board Office, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Further, move that the Select Board close the public hearing and hearing record for the Verizon New England Incorporated License Renewal.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting our local cable company that is truly a gem for our community. So thank you very much. I'm going to stop before we go into public comment because I tore in here like with my hair on fire. And I just want to welcome our new Town Administrator, Justin Casanova-Davis. We're very, very thrilled to have you here with us and so welcome.
Thank you, Anita.
And at this time, we're going to open it up for public comment on any comment that might affect the town. We're going to limit our comments to three minutes. And is there anybody out there who would like to say something? Nope, nobody's at this time. All right, so that moves us on to number two on the agenda. Please consider the approval of the Norfolk Housing Production Plan. Sue, you want to come on up?
Sure, thank you. Can I sit in a comfy chair?
Absolutely.
It's nice meeting you.
You can sit in this chair if you want.
No, 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 you can have that chair. Thank you. Good evening and thanks for having me here this evening. Tom Cleverden, our Chair, is here with me of the Norfolk Affordable Municipal Housing Trust, and Rich McCarthy is on Zoom. So probably about a year ago, we started the process for updating our housing production plan and we put out a proposal. And we are working with the same consultant that did our original plan. The state requires that every five years, we update the plan and that it become recertified. It's important that we do this because a certified plan is what can allow us to enter into safe harbor. If we can produce 16 units, we get affordable units, we get one year of safe harbor, and we do 32 units allows us two years of safe harbor. We have been in safe harbor. We were in safe harbor until mid-July this year. So it's really important to have this for the town. I'm just going to quickly go through some of the achievements since we received our first certified plan in 2017. Zoning amendment changes were made to the town center area to allow multifamily residential developments, 16 units an acre, height to three-story, and additional parking flexibility. We produced affordable housing through some 40B projects, including Boyd's Crossing, Meaning House Village, Lakeland Farms, Waits Crossing, the villages at Norfolk and the villages at Norfolk Station. Just to clarify, Waits Crossing, the villages at Norfolk Station have not started yet, but they are in, through the approval process. The town also conducted a wastewater master plan for town center, which investigated expanding the wastewater treatment in town and concluded a new wastewater treatment plant was a better alternative because the existing plant is on private property with limited expansion and would require pumping uphill future sewer in the town center. And finally, the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Scattered Site Program, which in the last, I believe, eight years, not in the last couple because housing prices have really kind of kiboshed that, we've produced 18 units of, 18 units throughout town through our scattered site program. We've also added, I am able to provide lottery services for developers both in Norfolk and out of Norfolk. And now though they pay me through the trust, the money goes into the trust, and it's been a great revenue source and helps cover my salary and indirect costs. The strategies that they have put in our, in our update, and this isn't all of them or all of the achievements, I just grabbed a few, is they would like us to work towards increasing the number of smaller units and condominium housing options to provide downsizing options for those residents who wish to remain in the community through conventional zoning and not necessarily 40B. We walk kind of a tough line with the 40B projects because developers cannot come in and just say they will only want to do one and two-bedroom units because that is seen as discriminatory against families by the Department of Housing and Community Development. But we definitely are seeing a need for individuals that are looking for not all of our big, big properties. They're currently conducting Southwood Hospital feasibility studies for potential housing mixed use, uses. There are some additional 40B projects that will create additional units to the subsidized housing inventory. We mentioned those Waits Crossing, Lakeland Hills, and the residents at Norfolk. They would like us to continue to add inventory using the scattered site program that the town. trust does. And they would like us to research aging in place for seniors at or below the income limit programs. Some examples would be families looking to downside outside of those below income limits and providing some adaptability assistance. Some examples are tax relief, home adaptability, such as chairlifts, walk-in showers, and grab bars. That's going to take some facilitating, some conversation with Justin, some conversation with town council, and some compensation with the housing trust. But that's something that, I would say, that's an item that is going in most communities' housing production plans. Last night, we presented before the planning board, the consultant came in and they unanimously voted to approve the housing production plan. And I'm here this evening to ask the Select Board to do the same. If that's the case, DHCD will receive a letter from the Chair of the Housing Trust tomorrow morning electronically, and a FedEx package will be sent to them as well so they can have the hard copy the next day. We have spoken to DHCD to confirm that this can be approved before our plan expires in mid-October.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a lot in a short amount of time.
I tried to be quick.
It was brilliant.
Thank you.
So excellent. I just have a question just for my own, in terms of processes, just for my own learning.
Sure.
And that is, it seems like you were talking about a certain number of units gets a safe harbor, but that I'm also hearing you talk about recommendations that have been made to. Are those two things separate from each other?
So safe harbor allows us not to have to accept any incoming 40Bs. Subsidized housing inventory number is the number that we have to reach to be at 10%. So two different numbers.
Yep.
But we have, I think, produced 32 units once to get us into safe harbor. It just gives the town a lot more ability to say, this isn't something that we think is good. But at the same time, if a project comes forward that we think is a good project, it gives you the flexibility to look at that project and permit that project.
Awesome, thank you. No, I understand the value of it, I was just trying to understand the differences between those two areas. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Kevin?
Oh, do I. So first and foremost, perhaps Rich might be the better one to speak to it, but Rich, can you just give us a quick highlight of what we have in front of the town right now in terms of open 40B proposals?
There are none at the moment. Everything's been permitted and approved and only construction.
So the reason why I ask that was because you had identified that we are out of safe harbor right now, identifying the fact that there still isn't anything that's been come through. So there wasn't anybody necessarily waiting at the wings to jump on us and get something that we didn't need built while we would prefer to remain in safe harbor. There wasn't any like negative implication of that overlap or that gap period, so that's good. One of the things I noticed as part of the report was Norfolk's distinct disparity in the percentage of multifamily housing units compared to the other communities surrounding us. And, you know, knowing that we just went through a long process to rezone our town center to be able to accommodate for more multifamily housing, even with all of that built up, does that get us in line? Do we feel like that's the initiative that we needed or do we feel that we're going to have to take further steps past that further on down the road?
I'll let Rich answer first.
I think it's a, it's a great question and I think part of the answer is going to be, you know, certainly the town center piece of it, but I think, and that's why we're, you know, we started to study looking at Southwood Hospital as another location where I think we can look at some multifamily housing in the context to fit within what I think people in Norfolk would feel is comfortable in terms of scale, massing, and so forth. So we have a couple locations. We, you know, we, I suppose, as a good plug, we're going to be hopefully receiving some proposals next week for master plan. We'll continue on to this topic to take a look at it. So there might be some other areas where we, I'll call within the periphery, so to speak, or the, on the boundaries of the town center, that might be more appropriate for smaller scale stuff, nothing of larger scale.
That's good, thank you.
That was the million-dollar question, Karen, this evening.
The other ones are easier that I have. So maybe we could just go over the high-level feedback that we got from the community sessions that were run?
Sure.
Kind of just the general sense of what was being said by the community?
Yep, so she basically said that in those meetings, that people did speak to not having multifamily units. People spoke to wanting Norfolk to stay the same. And I do think that people spoke to the 40B projects that have come to town, that initially they were, you know, they were the unknown, right? And now we have some projects to point out to people to say, this is, you know, this project is here and this is what it looks like. So I think people are starting to feel a little bit better about that and how the projects were managed and how the town took the time to have them be projects that fit within the community.
Right.
We did not get the participation that we had hoped. We did send out 3,700 postcards twice to all of our residents. And I think that first session, we had like 13 people, in our second session, we had 17 people. Rich and I-
That's pretty good, actually.
Thanks. Rich and I have chatted about how in, when we're doing this again in four years, when we're starting to put this out again, how we have to somehow get, you know, whether it's free spaghetti dinners or hot dogs and hamburgers, we have to somehow try to get more engagement from the community so we can get some more feedback.
Absolutely. And the last question I had was, I know that you had just met with the planning board, you identified they voted unanimously in support. What kind of feedback did you hear from that very diverse board now that has a lot of individual perspectives to lend to the process?
They had no questions.
That's everything I had, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's everything I have. Do we need a motion?
We most certainly do. I move that the board vote to adopt the Norfolk Housing Production Plan for FY '23 through '27.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on this, Sue.
Have a great evening.
Tom, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move for new chairs. Please. A second.
And now moving on to number three, consider the approval of the clerical union contract for July 1, 2021.
Yep. So since the board last considered this item on their August 2 meeting, the union voted to agree to the settlement parameters. So the next step is for the board to vote in approval of this. And then at November special town meeting, town meeting must approve that contract as well, and then we can give our clerical union their retro pay.
Awesome, thank you very much. Don't have any questions, do you?
No, we've talked this, you know, for quite a while.
We have, we have.
So with that, I move that the board vote to ratify a successor collective bargaining agreement with the Norfolk Municipal Clerical Employees as represented by Local 301 AFL-CIO-CLC for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I feel like you're far away. Let's see, number four says, please discuss and appoint a Select Board Liaison to the Advisory Committee.
Just quickly, the board has a variety of liaison positions that are available right now, but in time, due for the advisory committee meetings that are coming up, we suggest that the board appoint someone. They're looking to meet in the next couple of weeks and then maybe the board can consider the other committees in their following meeting. Or you can consider now, depends on.
Do you want to rock, paper, scissors, or is this a burning issue or should I take my turn?
Well, I mean, that depends, that's up to you. I mean, the meetings are in addition, they're another nightly meeting, and they are going to ramp up as we get up to springtime meeting.
Yep.
Now, we don't have anything particularly contentious yet on the town meeting warrant for the spring, so I don't anticipate it's going to be to the same level that we've had in previous years. However, it is an extra thing.
So is this interesting to you or do you want me to take it? I'm happy to take it.
It's all interesting to me, but if you would like your chance to delve into the interesting nature of these meetings, I'm more than happy to cede that over.
All right, I'll take that on.
You'll take that one?
I'll take that on. So would you move me in, sir?
I would. I move that the board assign Anita Mecklenburg as the Advisory Committee Liaison for the remainder of fiscal year '23.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, thank you so much.
Yes. And Amanda, you'll help me manage those meetings?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Will do.
And then, please, where are we at? Number five, please appoint Justin Casanova-Davis as Town Administrator.
So this is a procedural thing, obviously, it starts September 6. The board approved the contract before, but this is something that we need to do, so.
All right, let's do it.
So you haven't just been in the office with your feet up for a few hours a day?
Yes, he is a feet-up kind of guy.
I move that the board vote to appoint Justin Casanova-Davis as the Town Administrator effective September 6, 2022, with a term expiring on August 31, 2025.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Please appoint Justin Casanova-Davis to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
The Town Administrator serves on the Affordable Housing Trust, so I know the procedural vote that we need to take to put him on there.
Absolutely.
I move that the board vote to appoint Justin Casanova-Davis as a member of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust effective September 15, 2022, with a term ending June 30, 2023.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And another, the third one?
Yes.
Is the charm.
I move that the board vote to appoint Justin Casanova-Davis as a member of the Fire Station Building Committee effective September 15, 2022, with a term ending on June 30, 2023.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm excited to serve and hold those.
Awesome. And then the next one is, looks like we're going to have some more fun on Town Hill?
Yes, so we have a one-day license as well as road closure for a block party event. Public Safety has no concerns about these events and everyone's written off on it.
Awesome, sounds great.
Very good. I move that the board approve the use of Town Hill for the zealous pop-up beer and food events, including one-day wine and malts licenses and one-day live entertainment licenses for October 9 and 30, 2022.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. I also move that the board approve a road closure on Hampton Road for a block party on October 1, 2022 from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Please discuss the timeline of the Fire Station Building Project.
So we have Kevin Champagne from the Fire Station Building Committee, I think they're just going to give a timeline, what they're looking to do.
Hello, Kevin, take a comfy chair.
Oh, sure, thank you.
I hear the other ones aren't so comfy.
Oh, I was in that one last night, it wasn't too bad.
It wasn't too bad.
Thank you. We have two members of the project team that are joining us as well, Steve Kirby, who is with Vertex, the owner's project manager, as well as, actually, I don't see him on yet, Ron Lamar from Doran Whittier, although Don Walter, who's also with Doran Whittier, and Jason Harris are both on as well. So I think we could probably get started. I think it's going to be mostly myself and Steve talking. Welcome aboard, Justin.
Thank you.
You're just signing up when it's getting fun, I think, so.
So we wanted to present a timeline that the Fire Station Building Committee has been working on. When we first started this project, we discussed a couple of benefits to, or what we felt were strong benefits, to bidding this project in the fall of this year and then getting a contract in place over the winter so that spring construction could start. We were advised by our OPM that generally speaking, bidding things in the fall leads to better bids, just as contractors are trying to line up their work for springtime start. So that was, that was one piece of it. And then the other piece of it was just having, because we wanted to bid it then to get better pricing, we wanted to have the vote in hand so that when we went to town meeting and the ballot vote, that we had the actual construction number. So we tried to put together a timeline here that would kind of meet both of that criteria. There is, our reading, and Steve can get into this a little bit as well, our reading of the Mass General Law is that we have 30 business days from when we receive the bids to when we need to award the bid, although we will talk to town council to make sure that they agree with how we read that provision. But this timeline is based upon that 30-day window. So Steve, I don't know if that's a good enough intro, if you want to kind of take it from here and maybe put the schedule up on the, on the screen and kind of walk through it a little bit?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's great, Kevin, thank you. I'm going to share my screen, if I could. It's disabled right now.
You should be good.
So you, can you see that?
Yes.
Schedule?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Is it clear enough?
It's clear.
This is the, the schedule that was, I believe, provided to you in your packets. I did modify it a little bit and actually modified it since our committee meeting that we just had. But as, as Kevin said, we, we've been going along with the design and we're coming up on a timeframe and a schedule that we've had all along. And one of the key dates here on this schedule, and there's a lot of dates here, it's sort of, at this point, I had developed this a few weeks ago, so it's a little, some of the items that are, have been completed, and it really runs us through, you know, potentially the construction provided, we get, we get approval votes. But the key date on this, on this entire schedule is this December 22 of this year. That's the date that we intend on opening the general contractor bids. And, you know, we want to have the bid in hand so that when we go to the special town meeting, we're not, we're not presenting the project as an estimate, but an actual hard bid number. And because we're going to a town meeting and then it becomes a debt exclusion, we do have to have a ballot vote. And pursuant to an earlier meeting with the Select Board, we understood that the Select Board would have to authorize the ballot vote and that would be a 35-day period from the town meeting, which would impact our schedule because, again, as Kevin mentioned, Mass General Law, Chapter 149, requires that a low bid be awarded within 30 business days, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Otherwise, the low bidder does not have to honor his bid if it goes beyond that. So we've really been trying to keep to that 30 business days. And if you see essentially right here, 30 business days ends up being February 3, because that's a Friday, I think, I think the actual 30 is on a Saturday, but we wouldn't be awarding on a, on a Saturday. So I pulled it back to the, to the 3 to coincide with, with the, with the Chapter 149, 44, a law. So what we wanted to do with you today is sort of give you that introduction to, to go back and say, well, have the Select Board authorize the debt exclusion vote early enough so that we, we don't have that 35-day period and we can, you know, some of these dates that I put in here are assumed dates, I don't know that special town meeting would be the length, but assuming it's, it's around that timeframe, we could immediately have in hand the authorization from Select Board to go ahead and set up the special debt exclusion ballot vote. I do know from Amanda that we would need a couple of weeks to print the ballot, so I've worked that also into the, the schedule, which probably is not in the one that was in your packet. And as, as came up in the last meeting, we will touch base with town council to make sure that our interpretation of that Mass General Law is correct and there's no, there's no allowance for leeway. But our, our experience on other projects is, it is 30 business days, which, you know, is roughly 40 to 45 calendar days, depending on, depending on holidays and so forth. So that, that's, that's sort of what we're, we're looking to get in front of you tonight just to- just to, just to have the discussion, and then hopefully at the next select board meeting or the one following that, that you would actually entertain the vote to, to go ahead and approve that.
Yeah, so, so I think one of the things we're trying to lay out here is that there doesn't appear to be enough time, given the 30 business days, that we would need to award the bid, assuming that is correct, that we couldn't have you vote to have a town meeting, have the town meeting, and then wait 35 days to have a vote. We would really need to, to, for, I think, for you to vote to have the vote, I think is, I don't know if that's how you term it?
Yes.
Before the town meeting. And then hopefully it passes at a town meeting, and then we move forward with the vote.
And if it doesn't, we just cancel the?
Correct. And so then there would be cost of printing ballot, I mean, the ballots would have to be being printed before then. Right.
So. We, we wouldn't be printing the ballots until after the, well, I guess we could. We would, we would have the, the number that we're, we're presenting at the end of December, so we could, we could probably start that printing a little bit before.
Oh, I see. That you've got the printing the ballots starting the day after the town meeting?
The day after, yeah. We could probably move that up a little bit. You know, one thing, we're, we're into the holiday season, too, which, you know, one thing we're trying to do is make sure that we get the general bid in before the holidays because that, that following couple of weeks, we don't want to lose competition. We're doing the pre-qualification process right now. We do have interest by 11 general contractors. So that, that's a good amount. Doesn't mean that all 11 will, will, will submit a bid, but they are, they are requesting to be pre-qualified to be, to bid on the project.
Yeah, so, so a couple of the things I just wanted to weigh in here as well is, as Steve mentioned, we put out the pre-qualification bids. We've had very good responses, so people are very interested in the project. And part of me believes that that's because of the timing, that it's going to allow them to bid it before the holidays, and then the successful bidder has the work lined up starting in the spring. The other is that Vertex has indicated to us that, that based on historic pricing, typically for every month you wait, there's about a 1% escalation in the cost. So we want to obviously keep this project as affordable as possible, and so we're, we're trying to, to get this, this bid done and awarded, really in the interest of the town to try and, and make this project as affordable as possible. We know it's a big chunk of money for everyone. So that's really the, the thinking behind this. Well, and then the last, I already brought this up, but again, the, the timing, trying to lay out that we're not going to town meeting and town ballot based on an estimate that the design team has done. While we think they're doing a great job with the estimate and that it's accurate, we want to have the actual bid that we're awarding, that people are voting on.
Thank you. So I think, I might be off topic a little bit, but I think from the beginning, every time you come before us, I'm impressed with the thoroughness, the transparency, the thoughtfulness. It's so clear that you understand the lessons learned from our police station project, and that's clear every time you come before us. So compliments to you and to your committee. I think the thing that gives me pause, that has nothing to do with the work that you're doing, but has to do with the, the marketing piece, that we have to have our town have an appetite for this. We recognize the need, I recognize the need, and so just being sure that we're also doing the work. You've been transparent, the meetings are publicized, they're videotaped, I mean, all those pieces, I believe, are, are in place. And, and I know that so many times you've gone above and beyond to be extra transparent, and even again in this move right here, it's an attempt to be even more transparent. So that is all to your credit. I just, I'm worried about, how are we? I'm worried. Yes, marketing, that's the word. I'm worried about the appetite. Anybody you talk to cares about our firefighters and cares about that and understands that there's safety implications even in this project that are, that are important. But I just, looking at, out in the world and inflation, and people are anxious.
Sure.
So that's, maybe that's off topic. I, I see so much how you're being transparent to say, we want to come with our, you know, open, open books right here to say, this is what we need to do, this project, and we've been thoughtful and responsible every step of the way, and I believe that to be true.
Yeah. So I think probably getting awareness for the project is maybe a better, I mean, I think everyone on the committee obviously wants the project to pass. We've been putting in a lot of hard work.
A lot of hard work.
So I, I think increasing awareness about the project as much as possible. So we've had community events, we had the boards up at Community Day, myself, members of the committee have had a chance to talk to the public at, at those events. I know the chief had the boards up at Discovery Day this past Saturday. In, in our meeting just now, we talked about the fire station's having an open house on October 15th, and we're going to try and line up another presentation for that as well. Free pizza, in case anyone's listening.
Here you go.
Got to get the food.
We are also working with town council and OCPF to try and get a board approved that we can post up around town. We had, we had passed it, sent it, an initial board along to OCPF. They felt, and there were some statements on it, you know, that we're designing this building to be a 50-year building. They felt that the board was advocating for the project too much. So we're going to try and redo it and keep it very neutral, and just say that there's a town-wide ballot question coming up, and have a rendering of the fire station, and then a QR code that links you to the town website, and trying to pick some, some strategic places around town to put that. Again, you know, libraries, senior center, things, things like that, that maybe will at least catch some people's eyes that aren't aware of the project. And whether they want to scan the QR code or not, at least they're aware that, that something's happening with the fire station, that there's, there's a vote coming up that they can possibly weigh in on. So I, I think we'll definitely try and do another community event after the open house, but we're, we're trying to kind of, the, the community events, unfortunately, we haven't had the greatest attendance at. We did have one in May that we had very good attendance at, relatively speaking. But we're hoping maybe the boards, or maybe we can do flyers or something that can really increase just awareness of the project, whether the people are pro or against the project, they'll, they'll be aware of what's happening and, and that there's a vote, that they can come in and weigh in on the project.
Excellent. And we're, our community cable can help, can help have something that is cycling for folks.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Kevin.
I know that somewhere Carol Green is going to curse my name for asking these questions, but for this type of vote, would mail-in voting be an option or no?
That was one of the things that I want to ask Carol about. I can't answer that right now, and she's out on vacation. That's something we should regroup on.
Okay.
There was some, go ahead if you have other questions. There was something I wanted to bring to the board's attention.
Sure, go right ahead.
Along with this project. Obviously, Kevin and Jeff has mentioned the 35-day notice. Something else to consider, particularly with a special election, is whether the board considers filling the vacancy during that period as well, because that changes the timeline that you have to take a vote as well. That becomes a 63, 63-day notice. So working off the schedule that I've seen from the group, I've outlined some dates that the board would need to make those decisions by. If you do consider the, the select board vacancy, fill that, you have to vote by November 4th and December 6th if you're just doing the 35-day notice. But I think the board should consider that in their next meeting, what direction you're going to.
Okay.
That's good to note. Thank you.
Yep.
The other question I had is probably a little bit more technical in nature, but Todd, do we still have access to a medium to be able to allow residents to enter in their property address and then identify how much of a portion of a capital expense would be associated to them because of whatever projects we're going through? I know that was a piece of the previous system that we were using, but I do believe that might have been flaked off at this point. Is that correct? So we don't necessarily have that type of functionality available today? Got it? Okay. Thank you.
And to piggyback on what Kevin was saying, I think that, given that the election is in January, the mail-in ballot is, is super critical. So I think that's something we should definitely, as much as Carol might hate us for saying that out loud, I'm going to blame Kevin completely. I'm going to say it was his idea. Absolutely Kevin's idea, but it's a really good idea. And given the, the wintertime election date, I think that's important. So thank you. We generally don't take public comment in the middle of an item, but I think in this case, I would be happy to entertain three minutes.
I've attended both new meetings tonight, and I wasn't sure with a dead exclusion if we need to have a town meeting before a vote at the polls. And if it had to be once we were sure of the number, the, the cost of the project, do we have to have the cost, have a town meeting, and go to the polls?
Okay, we'll consider that. Thank you, Donna. Thank you. And was there a hand up on?
Yes. Paul Burns.
Hi, everybody.
Just a second, Paul. Let me talk to Justin for one second. So usually, and I'm going to ask you for your guidance here, too, as well, usually with public comment, we don't?
Right.
Answer it live?
Yep. I defer to how you want to. I, I know the response, but it's up to you how you want to.
I think if it's an easy response, then let's give her an easy response, but I don't want a big back and forth.
Yes. Okay, so yes, you would have your town meeting vote before the special election. You do not technically have to have the figure on that, but in this project, I think the committee would like to have that figure on the actual ballot.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna, and thank you, Justin. Paul, thank you for waiting. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you all. Just a couple of comments, and I'm glad that the schedule remains up on the screen. And Kevin, thank you for, for raising the question of if mail-in ballots are going to be doable for this. I honestly, I'm looking at this schedule, and I, I don't see how it works to have mail-in ballots, because you would have to have the town meeting, right, in order to know if it's going forward, and then some room for people to register, to receive the mail-in ballot. And I don't know all the nuances here, but there would have to be some amount of time just to allow that registration, right? So that's going to, I think, complicate this schedule as it is. And kind of just a more general comment, and, and I appreciate the board recognizing that winter can be a difficult time for this. I would, I would go so far as to say that it's an extremely difficult time for residents to potentially come out in the cold and risk slip-and-fall accidents, or otherwise just be dissuaded by, you know, the biting cold that can often happen in January. I might remind the board that the vote for the police-fire station back in 2016, coincidentally enough, also occurred in January. And to me, it just doesn't seem like democracy at work. You know, I've heard comments about how there might be price increases or this and that, sort of assumptions. I might, you know, counter that with saying, you know, following periods of inflation, there can be periods of deflation. So we really don't know how prices are going to move as we move into the year. But what I, I do believe is that we would get a greater turnout from the town if we were to have something like this in a more temperate time of the year. And I think a lot of it is hinging on this assumption that we are constrained by mass law, which, you know, I brought up in the, in the Fire Station Committee meeting a little bit earlier, that, you know, we really need to be, I think, careful about the fact that we can't include verbiage in our own bids on a project that is worth around $22 million that says contractors need to hold prices for, you know, some period longer than 30 days. You know, I work in bids myself, and I would include whatever I need to in order to make a project work. So I'd be keenly interested in what the town councils read of that section of mass law is. And, and I think just to sum it up in closing, you know, I, I think that we would be better served as a town in trying to hold something like this in April or May or some amount later. I, I, you know, I think that there are assumptions being made on the pricing, whereas I think the fact is we'll get a greater turnout if everybody can come out in a more temperate time of the year.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Did you want to add anything?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? All right, we are moving on to number 10, a presentation by the Safe Coalition, Jennifer.
Oh, which? Oh, that one? Okay.
That seat's more comfortable if you want.
In this one or this one?
Sit in a comfy chair.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely the comfy chair.
Hello, everybody. Kevin, I know you. So my name is Jennifer Knight Levine, and I am the executive director and co-founder of the Safe Coalition. And I really just want to come tonight and kind of introduce who I am and what the Safe Coalition is. So we were started really on the heels of the opioid epidemic in 2015. We started in Franklin, and really, as we started working with families who were impacted by addiction, we recognized that we were working with other communities and other community members and other school systems. And so in 2020, we opened up a program in Norfolk. So we are right down the street from here, on Dedham Street, and, you know, it's been an amazing three years in Norfolk. And in our three years here, we have met with an incredible amount of community members. We work with the police department really closely. We've worked with some of the fire folks. We work in the school systems every single day, and it's really impacted the trajectory of how the work has gone. So the, we were looking at stats this morning, and from 2019 to 2020, we had a 2% increase in overall revenue. When we opened up our office in Norfolk, from 2020 to 2021, we had a 230% increase in our revenue. And all of that money goes to programming. So overall, the Safe Coalition is a nonprofit organization that provides direct resources to community members who are impacted by mental health, substance use, domestic violence, and sexual assault. And with that being said, every single one of our services is, is completely free to the individuals and the families that we work with. So we are 100% grant and donor-funded, and the reason why is because we were working with a lot of families who either are on mass health or had private insurance, but there were huge gaps in services. So maybe they were on a three-to-six-month waitlist for a therapist, or they couldn't get a neuropsych exam, or they already saw one therapist, so they couldn't do group therapy in another setting. So by creating an entire organization that was not fee-based allows us to not only fill the gaps that we see in our, really in our medical systems right now, but also allows us to get kind of funky with the work that we do. You know, really, being born out of the opioid epidemic, one of the real early initiatives that we had was to develop awareness and education around Narcan. And we've given out over 800 doses of Narcan over the last five years since we've had our license, and that number has only increased. And in Norfolk, we've given out over 150 doses in the last year. And in tracking that, it kind of highlights that there are folks in our communities who are struggling, or family members who are struggling with addiction. And the other significant thing that we've seen in Norfolk specifically are domestic violence-related requests for support. So in October, we are thrilled to announce that we're opening up our first domestic violence support program. So this will be an eight-week program for anyone impacted by domestic violence. It's a closed group, so you sign up, we meet with you before the program starts, and then you are locked in for those eight weeks, and no one can kind of come in and out. And the idea here really follows the model that SAFE has, has really created from the beginning, which is listen to the needs of the community and develop up. So what we've been hearing from the community, especially in Norfolk, is that folks who are impacted by domestic violence are looking for clinical therapy, which may be challenging to receive, but also really want that peer support. Am I alone, or are there other people like me? So this new eight-week program provides both. You have a licensed clinician as well as a survivor in domestic violence who's been doing real survivorship work. The other really interesting thing, unique to the tri-town area that we've done over the past two years with the King Philip School District, is create a vaping diversion program. So early on, when kids returned back to COVID, there was a huge spike in substance use either on campus or at sporting events, at club events. And that's really challenging because we don't want kids using substances in general. We definitely don't want that impacting their academic life. We definitely don't want that impacting their academic life. And then when it does, we don't want them to be out of school for 10 days, which is the typical trajectory. So what we did in partnership with the KP School District is create an alternative program. So if someone at any of those public schools is in trouble for using a substance on campus or at a school affiliated program, they can either choose 10 days out of school or a three-day social-emotional-educational program with us. And it's awesome, because in one way, we get to meet with these beautiful, wonderful kiddos who we know are struggling, but then secondarily, we get to meet with their families and they all know that we exist. So, you know, in one sense, it's great to meet with these kids for these three days and really do this important work and possibly connect them with other resources. But then it's not uncommon for us to get calls six months, a year, three years for another sibling in the family, you know, to receive additional services. So that is something unique that has come up over the past two years. And we've had a few contracts with the King Philip School District. And I feel like we work a lot in the middle school, we work a lot with Norfolk residents, we've had an office here. And I just kind of want to share who we are and what we do, and certainly answer any questions that you might have about SAFE, because things have definitely escalated. Once we really looked at that 230% number, I was shocked, because, you know, you're just kind of in the day-to-day, you're getting things done. But to see that number in action was pretty incredible. So just wanted to share a little bit about that and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
So first of all, thank you. We're, seems to be very, very lucky to have an organization like yours in our community. And just the numbers that you're sharing are breathtaking. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And it's excellent to use this as a vehicle to make the community more aware. I think that's fabulous. And if they wanted to reach out to you, they...
They can info@saecoalitionma.org as an email. Our phone number is 508-488-8105. And that will be answered by a live person in our office who will call back. We're multilingual as well, so if there are any Spanish or Portuguese speakers who want to call, we would welcome that. And then anyone can follow us on Facebook or Instagram on SAFE Coalition.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Just a couple. Jen, first and foremost, I want to echo Anita's sentiments. I mean, thank you so much for the services you provide. It's amazing to see the kind of impacts that you've had in only a short time of operating here. So thank you so much. Could you briefly just go over the other towns that you serve?
Yeah, sure. So we started in Franklin. So we really focused, when we started, on the Rentham District Court area. And that was because we had a really close connection with the Rentham District Court. And as things have shifted and changed a little bit, we've been able to expand. But most directly, we work in Franklin, Menway, Norfolk, Rentham, Plainville, Walpole, Millis, Mansfield, and Foxborough. With that being said, though, we, because we are not fee-based, if someone called in Pittsfield, we would try to connect them with services or ask them to attend one of our virtual programs. So we have a adult siblings of a loved one struggling with addiction group that meets on Monday nights. And it's a lot of kids in their 20s, and they might be from this area, but then they go off to college. But the virtual piece allows folks to still participate, even if they aren't in the area anymore. And through Rentham District and our relationship with the sheriff and the DA, we're also in Uxbridge and Milford District Courts. So we work in those areas as well, but directly the towns, the nine towns I mentioned.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then it's fantastic to hear about the starting of the domestic violence support program, just knowing what a spike there was with the pandemic and everybody being home and everything that happened in that case. So that's fantastic to hear as well. Thank you so much. Justin, one of the things that we had asked about was the appropriate uses for the AG's opioid settlement program. And we were seeing how that could be allotted and used as a town. I don't know if that made it onto your list when you had started, but that was something that we'd inquired about to see if there was the ability for us to be able to allocate that funding to someplace like the SAFE Coalition as part of the allowable uses. So I don't know if you have the answer for us right now, not necessarily needed, but that was something that I think we had open coming out of our meetings before the summer.
It didn't make it to my list, however, I do have some background there. I want Todd to just let us know about the figures first, and then I'll just add something after. Go ahead, Todd.
So we have about $187,000 coming in through 2038.
We have about $187,000 coming in through 2038. Currently, all monies that are received by the town have to be deposited into the general fund unless there is a special mass general law allowing for it to go to other places. Currently, there is not, but there is discussion in the legislature to potentially have this. Where they're ultimately going to end up, I don't know, but that's in discussion right now. For us currently, we're supposed to put it in for general revenues.
Got it. Thank you.
That piece I was going to add from Todd is that there, his discussion is about having special legislation that allows us to sort of put that funding in sort of a specialized account and utilize it for opioid treatment and recovery. But that discussion is ongoing. General fund revenue for now.
Just need somebody at the State House, huh? That was all the questions that I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me. Take care.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, Justin, but we're to Town Administrator Updates.
My inaugural Town Administrator Updates. I'll keep this one brief. However, I did want to just highlight for the board and for the public a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to the board, thank you to the residents that have been privileged enough to meet, and thank you to the team here. It's a great organization. I'm excited to be here. I've been welcomed, I've been privileged to go to some town meeting events already, and people have been lovely. So I'm just really happy to be here. So thank you. Just want to say thank you to everyone. I want to give a reminder to the board and to our public that special town meeting warrant closes on September 19th at 5:00 PM. So far, we have about 17 articles that'll be on the warrant. At the board's October 4th meeting, we will review and discuss that warrant. Another thing that I would like to bring to your attention is ARPA. I know that was one of the projects that the board was waiting for me to get on board before we move forward. I do want to let the board know that we're beginning to schedule meetings with all department heads and sort of our partners to give them opportunities to present projects, because not everyone was able to do that before. So once that project, once I'm completed that process, we will come back to the board and present a final proposal list for the board to consider. So we are undergoing that process now.
Thank you.
And those are my Town Administrator Updates.
Any questions?
No, none for mine.
Not for me either. So then we're moving on to warrants.
I move that the board approve five warrants for the period of August 23rd, 2022 through September 6th, 2022, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then minutes.
I move that the board approve the regular meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2022.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then?
I move, well, do we have anything else for tonight?
That's it.
I have nothing.
In that case, I move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.